Okay, we've come to the Order for CSD Study Session. We can, uh...
Row call direct to show to exceptional council members here from TANLAM and council members in all council members.
What's that?
Item number one, certain case for my son, thank you.
The question is, uh, I know first case, but I'm just, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, there's a member here, but I have to, uh, out of order. Uh, right. Uh, it may be important. Uh, what do we need to do? Should we do it? Okay.
You're just council.
Okay, well, we will do that then. Okay, um, Mr. Rozansky?
None, thank you.
You're stalling?
Nothing.
So we have nothing, nothing here? Okay, let's, very quick, let's, just make this where we compare, okay, with everyone that's good, thank you. Okay, let's, uh, take item three.
This is where we're going to take care of something, but before we start, we have two new department heads that I would like to introduce to the city council, and I'd like to have them come up and introduce themselves to the city council and talk just a little bit about their backgrounds, and I'd like to start off with Barbara Ramsey, who joined us about, uh, three weeks ago. She took over for Diana Axley. She's the new human resources director, and we are very pleased to have her on board.
Mr. Um, Mayor, Homer, we're gonna do this tonight, too, at the seven o'clock meeting. It's a larger audience, don't you think?
Well, I wasn't planning on, on keeping Barbara over for that.
Okay.
As Homer said, um, first of all, he did not tell us to dress alike, but I see we're both in our black suits for our first meeting with the city council. I want to tell you how excited I am to be here at the city. Homer hired me. I took over for Diana Axley. I have many years of human resources experience at various si- various sized cities, from a large city like San Jose, California, La Mesa. Um, I've also done consulting, so, um, I can bring a wide variety of experiences, and I'm very much looking forward to, um, working here. I have a bachelor's degree in human resources and a master's degree in management, so, um, you have a great city, and I have a great staff to work with and a great management staff, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Let me ask you one question before you leave. You think we need a new city hall for your department? No, you don't need to ask that. That's for, you're too new to ask that, that's fine.
I don't have to answer?
No, don't have to answer. That's, thank you.
And our next new department head is Mark Harmon, who took over for Dave Nederhaus in general services. I think, uh, Mark is, uh, starting his, uh, second week now.
That's correct. Thank you, Homer. Uh, before I say anything about myself, oh, first off, I don't work at city hall, so I don't have to field that, that tough question. Um, before I say anything about myself, though, I do want to thank, first, the city manager for his confidence in, uh, me, in appointing me to this position, and I also want to thank the city staff here at Newport Beach. We hear a lot about joining a family when you start a new position, uh, but I have to tell you, last week, when I, I came on, as kind of nervous as the new guy on, on the block, it's kind of like the first day in grade school. Uh, when I showed up, the, the staff here made me feel absolutely welcome and truly a part of the family, so, um, it, it's just been, it's been a great first week. They may be tougher this week, but, uh, for the first week, they were, they were great. Uh, my last, uh, ten years, I spent with the city of Clermont as their community services director. Uh, key, community services director in Clermont, we took care of a lot of the same things that, uh, we do general services here at Newport Beach, with obviously the exception of, uh, beach maintenance. Uh, we didn't have much of that in, um, in city of Clermont, but it is an honor to be here. Um, it's just a, a great group, um, at, at general services, that it, it's truly my honor and privilege to, uh, be part of that team. I look forward to working with this council on many of the, of the projects ahead of us, and, um, am very excited and proud to, to be part of Newport Beach, so thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Homer.
Thanks for letting us do that.
No replacing for you. Can we just check?
I think, still looking, still looking.
No, no, that's all right, Homer. Okay, city clerk, we're gonna take three out of order. We'll take number three, please.
Okay, item number three, Bitter Point Pump Station Sanitation District Presentation.
Who's gonna give the report?
I'm Martin Dix. I'm the OCSD project manager.
Great, thanks.
And I'll be presenting a PowerPoint presentation with, uh, Henry, and who's our architect on this project.
Thanks. And Homer, hopefully this will start with where this is located and go from there. Thanks.
Homer, perhaps you want to give a brief staff report or, or Mr. Batum?
Steve, why don't you go ahead? Uh, just kind of the basics, I guess. Um, this is the pump station that you may be familiar with. It's, uh, down at the vicinity of our, our oil wells, which is on Coast Highway and about the Seminole Slough. I guess the nearest landmark would be Cappy's. And, uh, currently, uh, that pump station, uh, takes all of the force mains that run down Coast Highway and pumps it through, um, the banning property, uh, under the river to the, to the plant, uh, that's along, uh, Brookhurst now. So, uh, I guess it's time to replace this, this, uh, uh, pump station, and, and they're gonna give us a little kind of a preview of what they're thinking in the way of location and size and, and the hows and whys, so I'll turn it over to Martin to, to finish it off.
A- as background, I would say that, uh, council member Rozansky and myself had met on a previous occasion with the design people, and then I believe the design people have met with the homeowners association?
They've met with, uh, the West Newport Beach Association and also a separate presentation to the Newport Shores Homeowners Association.
So, I, I think the design has been changed substantially from when we first met. Uh, I hope it has.
It, it has. I probably have a few more questions tonight after they're, uh, hearing from the residents of Newport Shores.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, um, for allowing us to speak. Um, this, this shows the current site. You've already mentioned Cappy's is up towards the north. This is the Newport well field. If I zoom in towards, uh, Coast Highway, that shows you where the, uh, current site is. The existing Bitter Point pump station is down at the bottom, and the proposed station is gonna be just north of that site. This is the existing station, and one of the reasons why we want to, um, replace this aging station is, is because it is almost seventy years old, and currently it does not meet any electrical, seismic, or safety requirements. The station is also difficult to maintain. This is how our crews access the existing station. The new station will meet all new code requirements, so it'll, it'll improve all the deficiencies of the old station. It'll also, more importantly, improve the reliability and redundancy of not only the station itself, but also the force main network that conveys flow to treatment plant number two. But to do this, the station has to increase in size from eight million gallons per day to forty, and I'll explain the last two bullets in more detail. OCSD operates seven pump stations within Newport Beach. These are the main, these are the four main stations that pump directly to plant two, with Bitter Point being the closest to plant number two. This is how we currently operate. Right now, Bitter Point, Lido, Rocky Point, and Bay Bridge pump directly to plant two via junction structure. With the recent storm events, we had to not only run all our duty pumps, but also our standby pumps, just to meet the incoming peak wet weather flow. What this means is, we have no redundancy. In other words, both, both pipelines in Coast Highway are necessary to convey flow to plant two. To fix this, we're proposing to, to make two changes. One is an operational change, is to eliminate the junction box and pump flow from Lido, Rocky Point, and Bay Bridge directly to Bitter Point. Unfortunately, Bitter Point has to grow to, to accept the new flow. On the positive side, though, um, Lido, Rocky Point, and Bay Bridge do not have to significantly increase in size, nor, in the short term, do we have to tear up Coast Highway and replace those force mains.
At that junction box, is there other, other pumps in there? Is that what pushes it all on? Is that, what's in the junction box?
It's, it's just basically a place where all the flow joins together, and then it, it, there's two, um, gravity siphons that convey flow under the Santa Ana River directly to plant two.
So there's no pumping, it's just, it's pumped from all these other pump stations to the box, and by gravity, it goes into the other?
That's correct.
And, and so, and, but Bitter Point is too far away for the gravity effect to work? Is that?
Yes. Bitter, Bitter Point would be below, um, it would be lower in elevation, so it essentially would have to flow uphill to get from Bitter Point to plant two.
And the existing pumps are not strong enough to pump it to the junction box and put the, the Bitter Point proposed, um, pumps in there? And exactly where is that junction box?
It's just east of the, uh, actually, I can show you on this slide. The junction box is right here.
It's right on the river?
Yeah. So, um, what we're doing is, 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 is part of our operational change, is instead of having to pump all the way to here, these guys are now pumping straight to here only. So by shortening this pumping distance, we're able to gain, um, some capacity in our, in our, uh, force main lines.
And the flows that are in those lines, uh, Bay Bridge, Rocky Point, well, Lido, I probably answered my own question, but are all the flows in those lines and the flows that are going through Bitter Point generated in Newport Beach?
Um, not one hundred percent. I think, I think, um, Costa Mesa and also, um, Irvine Ranch does contribute some flow, but the majority is Newport Beach.
Okay.
The Irvine Ranch flow is from Newport Coast.
Right.
Yeah, Crystal Cove, yeah.
But they're getting paid to handle their flows, or their sewer or whatever. We're not getting money, it's Newport Coast residents, but it's not our district, so you, you can move on.
Okay.
What's the, um...
I've got a question. Um, how many, uh, MGD goes through the junction box right now?
Um, I think it's, it's less than forty right now, but, um, peak wet weather flow is forty.
At what distance does it, it start to degrade? You mentioned the longer the distance, then at some point it degrades.
Um, at what distance precisely? Um, I, I probably couldn't answer that without, uh, doing some research, but, um, this distance right here is approximately one mile.
Okay.
So just by shortening the pumping distance by one mile, it's enough to give us a little bit more capacity in the existing force mains that are along Coast Highway.
Is from Bitter Point, uh, to, uh, your junction box, that is a force main two, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And is it a force main now?
Yeah, we, we currently have two force mains.
So you have two pumps there, you're saying?
Um, no, we have actually four pumps.
Okay, but, but there's pumps, the junction box, that, I mean, the box that we saw, or the location, has no pumps in it. I mean, that's just electrical box.
Yeah, that's, that's just the above ground, that's just what you see above ground. Below that electrical box, we have a much larger mechanical room, which contains the motors and the pumps.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I just...
That's a good question.
It didn't, well, it's not too obvious. I'm sorry.
So I explained that Bitter Point has to increase, um, to handle the flows from Lido, Rocky Point, and Bay Bridge.
How much flow is that?
The other stations are gonna contribute about thirty million gallons per day, and Bitter Point contributes about ten, so for a total of forty. Now, what this, what that operational change, and also by increasing Bitter Point, provides us is with some redundancy. We are now able to, say we have a break in one side of our force main network, we can take that pu- pipeline out of service without interrupting service to Newport Beach. Now, this slide is just gonna show you how we're proposing to lay out the above-ground structures. We're gonna have an electrical room that is approximately thirteen hundred square feet. We're gonna have a generator, two hundred square feet, an odor control facility, which I, which I might explain is, is to control odor. Currently, we do not have an odor control or a permanent odor control facility in the existing Bitter Point pump station. We're also gonna have a, a structure that provides, um, a stairwell access to the, to the below-grade mechanical room, and we're also gonna have a transformer. So the total area...
Are all those above-ground structures?
Yeah, these are all above-ground structure. The total area is gonna be tw- approximately twenty-three hundred square feet. Now, in contrast, an eight million gallon per day station is gonna take roughly thirteen and a half hundred square feet. Now, if I overlay the two, now the difference in size is not five times, but only a difference of about a thousand square feet. So having, having five times the flow does not mean, uh, you know, a surface impact of five times. So now I'd like to introduce Henry, who's gonna talk to you about the architectural look and feel.
Thank you. Again, uh, this is the, uh, site of the pump station, uh, and a view that we're all very familiar with, and you can see how, uh, very dominant the presence of the oil wells are. One of the more important, um, um, issues here would be, uh, views of the pump station, especially views from the, uh, the homes, in this particular case, across the marsh west of, the northwest of the site. And what this slide shows, and we actually took this photograph right off the deck of one of the homes, uh, looking towards PCH, and you can see how, uh, the dense foliage, um, uh, actually have a, a greater, uh, visual impact than the station itself, which would be right around there. And across the site is, uh, actually a handball court, again, having a greater visual, um, presence than the station itself. As you walk closer towards PCH, again, uh, you can see how, um, dominant the oil wells have become. There's some existing trees right now that, uh, in time as they mature, would help, uh, further screen, uh, the station, which again would occur somewhere here, across the marsh. And again, just for orientation, uh, those slides were taken from this direction, looking at this line of sight. Uh, the first, one of the first schemes that we studied, um, uh, took the approach that we wanted this station to, uh, be a non-monolithic building, and wanted to break it up into, uh, smaller parts, because it's right on PCH with the setback of about ten feet, and we didn't want a monolithic building just landing right there on PCH. So, uh, from this ground perspective, uh, it's a digital, digital, uh, perspective of that, we thought that by utilizing planters, we could break up the mass of the space and use plants to integrate the electrical room, which is right there, the most dominant above-grade, uh, piece, with the rest of the screening elements, um, of the station.
Those look like ficus trees to me.
When we presented this to, um, some members of the council, um, there were, of course, some comments, which we incorporated in the next round. Council wanted, um, a more non-industrial look, they wanted, um, uh, to have more trees rather than planter walls, and basically to have a better, a much better non-industrial feel towards the whole, um, project. So, we went back to the drawing boards, and what we did was, here we eliminated a lot of trees, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, a lot of the planter walls, and introduced more trees for screening. We, um, utilized, um, some stone veneer or materials that would convey, again, a more non-industrial look, in this case perhaps, uh, community amenity like a small library or, or a community center, uh, with colors that would reflect the, uh, the surroundings, you know, more of the buff and sand color. Use of glass, okay, to give a hint that, uh, you know, there is some human use to the building and not just, uh, you know, an industrial, uh, building. You know, utilizing, um, trellises and lattices, solar screens for that matter, uh, again, just to, to reinforce the fact that there's some human use towards the building. The heights of the screen walls were also reduced, I, we're to go back, um, so that the height and the mass of the building would be, you know, uh, cut down. Again, uh, the electrical room is the most dominant building, even though it's only thirteen hundred square feet or so, it's facing PCH. The rest of the utility, uh, would be behind the screen wall, which explains why we still have the wall and we still have some trees.
Yeah, Henry, just so I can enlighten council, go back to that last slide if you could.
Sure.
The, the original building, which was, uh, none, well, they're trying to block the, uh, oil wells. They were trying to do us a favor, so now if you go back to the new scheme, the new elevation, keep, yeah, that one, on the upper one, you'll see that, the walls are much shorter, so the pumping wells will, will continue to show, but at least this has a, um, less institutional feel. That was, uh, softened it on the streetscape. Um, Steve, I don't know where the citizens were on this one, but, uh, anyhow, the, the pumping wells will actually show over the walls, and, uh, I, I think, no matter how big you build the walls, they're always gonna show.
Yeah, when, when we met with, um, West Newport and Newport Shores, I mean, the community did have some concerns concerning the height of the station, and we explained why the station needed to be twenty feet tall.
Yeah, could, could you go through that, because that was gonna be one of my questions? Why, again, is it gonna be, does, we need a twenty-foot-tall structure there?
Mainly to make room for electrical equipment, but, um, right, right off the guy...
So how tall is this electrical equipment, and what kind of electrical equipment are we talking about?
Electrical panels, uh, motor control equipment. We, we truly don't have a full twenty feet. We actually have to start at three feet, because we have to be above the hundred-year flood. So, um, within that seventeen feet, we have electrical panels, we have mechanical ducts, we have also ventilation, that all have to fit within that, uh, seventeen feet. Um, I, I, we did bring, uh, you know, I could share with you mechanical plans if you want to see in detail what it looks like, but, um...
But I saw a drawing where at least five feet of it was a parapet wall, it seemed like, to, to cover up air conditioning equipment and things like that on the roof.
Um, how, how tall is the parapet?
Three and a half feet.
Parapet is three and a half feet.
All right, well, the plan I saw looked more in three and a half feet, but even assuming it's three and a half feet, why does the air conditioning equipment need to be on the roof? Why can't it be on the side of the building to lower the height of the building? And I, I guess, which leads into my next question, this, this building, or this project, it goes thirty feet into the ground as well, for the wells and the, and the pumps and all that.
Yes.
Is that accurate? Why can't the electrical equipment be put in a similar underground structure? Why does it need to be above the pumps?
Almost the entire below-ground structure is being used by the mechanical equipment. We're, um, I can, I'd have to go back a few slides, but we're constrained by the north, because we have a, um, a below, below-grade fourteen-foot-by-five-foot reinforced concrete box, which is a, just a big drainage box, so we can't go any further north. And to the south of us, they're proposing a, um, a right-of-way for a future primary arterial for OCTA. So we're, we're really limited in our space, so between those two constraints, we have, uh, our mechanical equipment. The only way we could, we could put something below-grade would be to push, um, out towards the actual well field itself. And I don't think it would be that...
Well, you're using north and south, it's actually, I think you mean west and east.
Yeah.
Coast Highway goes east-west there, not north-south.
Okay.
So on the west side, you're saying, there's, um...
A reinforced concrete box.
A box? And whose box is that?
Caltrans. This, this slide right here shows the, uh, the proposed right-of-way, that would be to the east. And then right here, you can see the, uh, the reinforced concrete box. That's kind of limiting us.
Well, there's a lot, it seems like a lot of space between that box and, and your building.
Well, this is just the above-ground portion. The, the below-ground portion actually continues out, not, not terribly close, but I think to right about here.
Where is your wet well, and, and, uh, where will the pumps be installed? Where you have to, if you have to pull a, a motor or a shaft or something like that, where would that take place?
Those are all below-grade, all underground.
Yeah, but where are they physically here? Are they gonna be below the building, or are they in that area right here?
Eric's the designer's room.
I'm a design engineer for, uh, Lee and Roe, we're the consulting firm commissioned to design this pump station. Uh, the question you're asking is where the pumps are located. There's actually two below-ground portions. There is a wet well and a dry well. The, uh, wet well portion is right here, this is where your incoming flow comes, this would be below ground. Your dry well portion, where your pumps are located, are in this general facility. As Barton was trying to explain earlier, our below-grade structures actually extend out to about there, and we have some hatches for some maintenance access.
Okay, but in your, uh, electrical building, are you going to, are there any pumps directly below that to where you have to have?
Absolutely, yes. The pumps are located directly below the, here's the electrical room and the pumps, there's five pumps located directly beneath there. They go down about thirty-five feet.
So you're gonna have to have hatches in the roof to where you get, or do you have internal cranes in the building?
Correct, there's internal cr- bridge cranes in there, there's quite a bit of mechanical equipment.
Okay, so that's one of the reasons why the ceiling has to be a little bit higher, so you can pull the shafts out?
Correct, there's, uh, several issues why the, we are losing about almost three and a half feet. It has to do with the hundred-year floods and also accommodate, uh, uh, bridge cranes, clearances for lifting and pulling motors. Also, we're limited on there's local gravity flows from the Bitter Point area, and those gravity flows dictate a certain elevation or a starting point, so we're, we're constrained there, too. And we work out all the elevations, we're kind of fixed with our certain, that's why the pump station's thirty-five feet. If our gravity lines were coming in deeper, we might even be down forty or fifty feet, so it big days...
Okay, so how many total pumps do you have approximately?
Five pumps.
Five pumps, and they're spread in this area here?
They're basically, yeah, correct. Basically right below the electrical room there. Also, you've shown in these slides are the visual impact to the, uh, community, stuff that is above-grade, and the reasons why it's necessary for us to include screening walls and screening elements to hide our above-grade portion of our structures. All the below-grade structures would have zero impact to the community.
Yeah?
Question, what type of pumps are those? Are they, um, submerged pumps? I mean, is that...
They're actually submergeable pumps, they're centrifugal-type pumps, non-ragging. That means our, in theory, if things were to go wrong and our pump station were to flood, our pumps would continue pumping without any problem.
So that's all sealed, is what you're saying?
Yes, they're sealed motors, those motors could be submerged, they're, we're not planning on submerging the pump station...
Right.
But yes, it is part of the plan. There's actually, uh, that's part of the reason why you see such large, uh, electrical building generator sets, there's a lot more redundancies, there's a lot of more what-if scenarios, uh, compared to your much smaller existing pump station that was built in the thirties. Uh, it doesn't take too many things to go wrong for an accident to happen there, and part of the new electrical code requirements and OCSD design requirements requires a bit of safety, uh, to prevent accidental spillage in this area.
So that's a, is that a multi-stage pump, or is that just a single centrifugal?
It's just a single centrifugal punch, we have, uh, excuse me, a pump. We have VFD, so we're able to regulate the, uh, speed of the pump.
What's your vertical clearance need for the crane?
Uh, to give you an idea of these pumps, uh, the motor itself is probably as tall as I am, and the pump, again, is probably as tall as I am, so you're talking from the bottom of the suction of the pump to the very top of the motor, it's a little over twelve feet. Uh, the pipes underneath the ground, inside the pump station himself, are three feet in diameter, so this is quite large equipment underneath the ground, that you do not see in these drawings.
I have a question for you. Um, being involved myself in the installation of wireless telephone equipment, I appreciate always the desires of engineering to have everything just so, and then, kind of what happens is you have to accommodate community concerns, aesthetics, those kinds of things. Is there any way that those electronics can be stacked horizontally, or sort of a different configuration of those electronics so that you could reduce the elevation of the building, the height?
Um, again, part of the elevation, that again has to do with the hundred-year floods, we, we're starting there. Uh, it's basically part of the new, uh, design requirement... It's basically part of the new design requirements that all electrical equipment be above-grade. Like I mentioned earlier, if an accident were to happen and the pump station were to flood, our pumps could continue pumping. But if we had electrical equipment down there, that would short out all our electrical equipment. The pumps would no longer run and you would have a spillage and a leak throughout the area.
So that enables you to start at that three-foot starting point, but from the three foot to the top, is there any leeway in there?
Yeah, well, part of the problem is we're quite large pumps. And there's turning radiuses for conduit. There's duct work in there to provide for electrical classification. Requirement to meet Title VIII codes in terms of electrical, and also NC, NEC 2002 code requirements. And so part of that, we have a whole bunch of ventilation equipment that's on the roof. And that is heightened by a parapet wall there.
Mr. Mayor? Let me remind council one thing. Obviously, this is information-only. I'm on the sanitation district board, but when they did their original design and I had met with the people, they were trying to help the city out by making this a higher project to block the oil wells. Quite candidly, this height is to our benefit, at least from the highway perspective, in blocking oil wells. Those oil wells are quite high. So they have agreed to lower the mass of the building. I mean, it's a much smaller building than it was originally. And so I just, to what end are we trying to reduce the height of this building? Because all you're going to see behind it is we have thirteen oil wells right there, directly behind it, and an oil tank field.
I think the concerns of the residents are that this structure, if it goes in, is, I mean, it's there and that's it. We're going to see that building there forever. What's the useful life of this, projected useful life of this project?
Hundred years.
I believe it's designed for fifty years.
Okay, so at least for the next fifty years, we have a building that's kind of sandwiched in between two natural areas. You have the canal and the wetlands area to the left, to the west of the property. And you have the Banning Ranch to the right. I know that their master plan or whatever shows a road coming out there from Seventeenth Street, but I'll be very shocked and amazed if that road is ever built. And so, you know, you're sandwiching in your station there to accommodate a road that's just never going to happen. And so, you know, and the oil wells behind, yeah, they're there and they're unsightly. And yeah, we'd like to get rid of them. I think we're the only area in town that has oil wells. But eventually, that oil is going to play out or the wells will be relocated. If the Banning Ranch folks ever decide that they can get their act together and build on their property. Or if the River Coast Park people come in and turn it into a parkland, maybe they'll disappear. The wells will be consolidated to some other area. But we'll still be stuck with the building. So the concern is here, we're introducing an element that's not going to disappear that, you know, they want to be as least impactful on the environment there as possible. And so, and I appreciate your efforts to redesign the exterior per our recommendations or our, whatever you want to call them, at our meeting, but they do have concerns. And so I would, my intent here is to explore all possible avenues. And if we can reduce the impact of the building, so much the better.
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to make one quick correction. These thirteen oil wells are, do not belong to Banning Ranch nor does the oil well, or the tank farm. They belong to the city of Newport Beach. And we probably have a useful life there, perhaps twenty years. You know, we are landscaping the west side, we being the city. And I know the sand district will help out immensely on that effort. But this has, that tank farm and those oil wells have nothing to do with Banning Ranch.
No, they don't have anything to do with Banning Ranch. But eventually, that property will be redeveloped and there'll be pressure for oil wells to be consolidated to other areas. And understanding that they are our oil wells, even more shame on us that that area looks that way. Because it is unsightly. And if it was in Corona del Mar, I guarantee you, it wouldn't look that way. And so the idea here is to upgrade, not degrade, the area. So that's my point.
All right. Let me approach this a little different angle. What discretion or right does a city have to tell the sewer district anything? I mean, isn't, don't they have an easement? Don't they have a right to do kind of what they want? Or is there some legal right or city attorney? Are they just being a good neighbor in essence?
Actually, for them to place this facility on this property, I think we're right now working on some documentation because we actually own the lease of that property.
So we have some control. This is not just neighborly. We're not just trying to get along. There are some rights that we have to say what this is going to look like and how it's going to appear along the basis.
Right, I think we've been requested to give up a portion of our lease rights to the property.
That's fine, you've answered it, that's fine.
Pete, Robin, is the city limit line roughly along here? This being county and this being city?
I don't know. I haven't looked at the lines. All I know is that I did get a request a couple of weeks ago for the city to abandon or give up its interest in the lease rights for them to be able to do this project. I don't know how much of it-
We do have oil well lease rights, but the point I was trying to make is I'm not, Steve, do you remember where the city boundary line is? Isn't it roughly along the back of sidewalk?
Yes, it is.
And it comes out to the center of the slough and goes up that way?
Right, it goes along the slough, kind of, and basically parallels the Caltrans store.
You're talking jurisdictionally, do we have the control of this?
Jurisdictionally, as far as, is this in the city of Newport Beach? I don't think it is, but it is a city lease. And so that we have the control of the lease, service rate.
Okay, let's try to make a deal.
Well, we have a long agenda tonight, so perhaps you could wrap it up?
Maybe, while you've heard, how much more do you have for us?
That's it, that's the end of the presentation.
Well, then, maybe we can have the lights if we're at that point. So if that's, when you, if you're done, that's back to the council, what do you want? In other words, what response will they take back to the district at this point from us?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to sit down and talk a little bit more about the project and about what your limitations are with regard to the site, but how we can best benefit the area as opposed to not benefit the area.
Well, specifically, is it too close to the street? Is it too wide, too tall?
I think it's too high, it's too close to the street. It may unnecessarily be above-ground rather than below-ground. I'm not sure that the landscaping that even with the revised plan is suitable. There's other issues about utility lines that run behind that I think the city has asked them to underground for us. I think we're giving up a substantial property right here. How much did you pay for this property?
Oh, we haven't paid anything.
How much are you negotiating to pay for the property?
A hundred and sixty thousand.
A hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I guarantee you, if that piece of property wasn't encumbered by our lease and other easements or whatever that runs through that property, you wouldn't be buying it for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we do have a substantial property right and our lease rights to that piece of property that we're going to be relinquishing. For how much? How much?
One sixty, right?
No, we're not, one sixty is going to the property owner. How much are we being paid to relinquish our rights?
I don't know the details to it, but Councilmember Rozansky is raising a lot of issues that I have raised when the document was presented to me.
Okay, my understanding is we're getting a big fat goose egg zero. So if we need to ask for certain things that we would like to see with regard to the project in exchange for our cooperation to relinquish our rights to the property, I don't think it's out of our ability to ask. And so there aren't, as you requested, a number of things that I think the community and I would like to discuss with them.
And from your standpoint, what's your, what's your project timetable?
We would like to enter into escrow November. We have coastal commission permit that we need to start soon. And we also have a, and also on a different issue is a Caltrans decertification, also that runs in parallel. So ultimately, we'd like to be in final design by June 2006.
Go ahead.
And in construction in March.
That's fine, so it gives us, gives us something, a response to timetable.
Mayor?
We have a-
Oh, excuse me, city attorney?
I was just going to say, I would request that, to the extent that there's any further discussions, we probably have somebody from my office involved so that we can make sure we get the documentation correct and whatever release we would do from the lease. Also, utilities, to the extent that this project might impact our oil well operations. I don't know if that's already been reviewed. Have they already reviewed that? Okay.
My question is, is that basically you have to have this pump station. And we have a real big choice here. If we didn't have the pump station, we could have this stuff on the ground. So, you know, I mean, I don't see that this is a total, where we're in the driver's seat and they can place it two blocks back or something else. It's relatively going to have to be there, and I think-
Actually, you raised a good question or a good point. Is it possible to move that pump station five hundred feet further down Coast Highway towards Superior? Technologically feasible. I don't want to know about the cost and all that, but technologically, is it feasible to accomplish your same goal if you move it five hundred feet down the road?
Actually, it needs to be next to the existing station.
And why is that?
That's for hydraulic reasons.
So that's the very only place that that pump station could be, is what you're telling me?
I mean, technically, yeah, you're right. You could, you could put it somewhere else, but a lot of effort has already been invested.
Aside from the effort and all that, I just want to know, is it possible to move it five hundred feet down the road?
Yes.
Is it possible to move it five hundred feet further up that road that's never going to be built?
That is probably not possible because we're trying to shorten the pumping distance and also the height at which we have to pump so that we can have that operational flexibility.
Okay, but it doesn't have to be there in that one very spot.
It will just cost a lot more to be anywhere else.
Hey, I understand that. You said it had to be in the one spot.
And it does.
No, it doesn't. I think he's just said that.
One by one here, okay. Mr. Webb?
I think that one of the things that he was asking as far as moving it, if it were to go down the sewer access road this direction, hydraulically speaking, that would, I don't think that's going to hurt you too much.
That's going to, that's going to increase the elevation at which we have to pump. And also, it's going to increase the pumping distance that Lido, Rocky Point, and Ave Bridge will have to pump.
Okay, so it's, even though this is roughly level and you're going towards the place you're pumping the water?
Well, I mean, this is, this is your tank farm.
No, I understand. There would be a tank farm. I mean, if there were someplace up, behind the tank farm to go, that was one of the things, I think, that Councilman Berden Rozansky was asking. Rather than, he suggested five hundred feet this direction. And I think that you were pointing five hundred feet towards the river along the, along your sewer lines.
Yeah, I mean, economically speaking, this is the most feasible site for us.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I think everyone agrees the services being provided is very necessary for our community and certainly appreciative. It seems that maybe there would be some flexibility in the design. And perhaps Councilmember Rozansky can sit down with your engineering team and maybe we can come up with something that might be more acceptable to your local community there.
I'm not saying we're totally against the project. I'm saying that there's, I don't want you to walk away from this meeting thinking we've rubber-stamped what you presented and you're going to go on down that road. I think there's some more conversations that need to take place based upon the input that I've received from the community.
Okay.
I think you, I think you got that message, right? I mean, I think you've got a big message that what you presented to us today is not acceptable to us. I mean, in a nutshell. And I don't try to take the wind out of your sails, but I think you've got that message. And I'm saying, you're going to have to work a deal out. And I guess before I spend money on your side, I'd get some more defined input from this side, specifically the councilman whose district this is located. I mean, that would be my advice. Okay?
Okay.
Let me ask you, any more direction from us?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I need to meet with Stephen to find out exactly what he's proposing. But we've also met with city management and we've worked with city staff as to this location. This location was also presented in the 2003 negative declaration. And this project was also included in the 1999 strategic plan EIR. So as far as the location, I mean, the opportunities were certainly there for community review. And in fact, when we went to the homeowners association meetings, it wasn't to kill the project. It was mainly to get their input as to the look and feel of the project. And the general consensus from both associations was they approved.
Well, I'll be happy to put you in contact with some of the people, very people you met that have not expressed their approval to me anyway, so.
Okay, well, you've been given direction. City manager, that, did I deal with it appropriately? Okay, great. City clerk? Do you want to go to number two? Well, let's go back in order. This isn't, you know, we're not tossing stones. Pardon? Well, it's fine, we'll go back to number two. We took this out of order just out of deference.
Okay, item number two, comprehensive sign code update and sign design guidelines manual.
City, city manager?
George Berger is going to provide the Stanford report.
Great, thanks.
Good afternoon. In order not to belabor the time factor for this afternoon's meeting, I'm not going to go over the public outreach in any, in any grand detail, except to say that there was an extensive public outreach program over about a year and a half process by which we tried to get as much public input on the redoing of the comprehensive sign code, which is a part of the city's zoning ordinance. We-
Is your mic on?
I believe it is.
Go ahead.
Am I just not close enough to it?
No, it's fine. I just want to make sure we don't do this twice. Thanks.
Very good. Let me, let me kind of jump back into it. We are redoing at this time the city's comprehensive sign code, which is part of the zoning ordinance. The sign code is one of the most difficult pieces of the zoning ordinance that anyone really takes on. It's ordinarily not done with any more regularity than about every twenty years. And in fact, we're about thirty years into it, almost. So we're about ten years late, really. As I said at the outset, we've gone through about a two-year process for public outreach. Staff and consultant work on this process. And we've gone through three public hearings with the planning commission to get to where we are now. And again, not to belabor that part of it, what I'd like to do is to introduce Ron Flugrath, who is the city's retained consultant from RBF's urban design studio. They've been working with us on the process all the way through. And also, I'd like to introduce Kathy Walcott, who's a contract staff attorney who's been working us, working with us on the process as well. Not only can I answer questions as we go along or as Ron gives his short presentation to you, but we also had a nine-member working subcommittee made up of members of the public, Irvine Company representative, members from the business improvement districts, members of some of the more prominent neighborhood associations. And one of the members was also Richard Lures from the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, who is here in the audience this afternoon. So I'm sure that he may, would, may like to, if there's time, say a word or two, if you'd like that, so that he can give you the community steering committee's perspective. So with that, I'm going to introduce Ron Flugrath, who will give you a brief presentation of some of the highlights and the things that we were working on. And then we can talk about it a little bit further at the end.
Thank you, George, mayor, members of the council. George said brief about six times, I think, so we're going to try to keep it real brief. If I'm too fast, I apologize. But if you have questions also, stop. George, you can just flip the buttons there. George mentioned the background of the project. We had a great steering committee that we worked with. We did many public workshops. And lastly, got a recommendation from the planning commission. So it's been a long process, but a very valuable process. Also, the city attorney's office has been very helpful in really ironing out the legal points of this and brought in a special city attorney or attorney whose expertise is just really in signs. And he lent his expertise to it also. So it's really been through the wringer, if you want. And George is absolutely right that the sign code is one of the most difficult. And, oh, it's just difficult sometimes. This one hasn't been too difficult, so we're going to go through the high points now and get on with it. So George, just take it away. You can do the next one there. Many of the issues that we looked at, next, came to us from staff. Other issues were uncovered through our discussions with the sign committee. Others were discovered through the workshops. Others were discovered through working with the city attorney's office. One of the areas that we immediately saw was the sign area. And the sign area in the city of Newport Beach basically is two square feet of sign area per one foot of lineal street frontage of your building, which is fairly large by most city standards. So what we do is a little quick study here to show what the effects would be like if you took one- you took one, if you took two square feet of sign area, which is your code today, versus 1.75 square feet of sign area per linear frontage, and then down to 1.5, and just one square foot of sign area. So through that study, working with the committee, we realized that probably 1.5 was a good place to be. It's just those, the size of the sign versus the storefront size and so forth, it just, it fits and looks right in proportion. Another one of the issues that we looked at, too, is right now the sign code allows 200 square feet maximum sign area. So if you have a very long linear frontage of your building, you can achieve a large sign up to 200 square feet. That came up also through the committee discussions, and the committee thought that, well, probably about 75 square feet was really, should be the maximum. So we did a little study to show what that would look like, and we did some field investigations. And we looked at Albertson's, for example, and Albertson's actually has, well, this is actually 75 square feet of sign area, the total that would be allowed on a 100-foot building. So they would actually be allowed 150 feet if we didn't have the 75-foot cap, but 75-foot really works here, that's what they actually had. Pavilions, we looked at, they actually have 56 square feet. They're entitled to probably about twice that much, easily, but not utilizing it. And the next slide shows what their sign would look like at 75 square feet. So still plenty adequate for that use. So we went through that study, and the recommendation that's before you is to limit the sign, total sign area, to 75 square feet maximum, instead of the 200. We looked at roof signs. Most communities today do not allow roof signs, and so was the recommendation today that those would be prohibited sign types unless you could prove that you absolutely had to have, for some physical reason, for the identification of your building, you would be able to apply for a variance and possibly get that approved. But there's very few reasons for that.
I think you have another standard in there, if it's historical or unique to the area. It's not just that you need it.
Well, there's a, we'll get to the, kind of, the escape clause, too, that we can talk about that. It comes out of the non-conforming signs. Pole signs are also something that we looked at, and in order to upgrade the appearance of that, pole signs we're recommending be prohibited in favor of what we like to call blade signs or tall monument signs, and you'll see some shots of that later. So all of these types of signs would essentially be prohibited under the new regulations unless your building has a minimum of 50 feet of linear street frontage, and your building is set back, so that a wall sign really wouldn't help you that much. So for example, the Rusty Pelicans restaurant is set back. They would be allowed to have a monument sign or a pylon sign, but not a single pole sign, like a lollipop sign. So we're trying to just upgrade the appearance of those.
I thought in your presentation that you gave us that Rusty Pelican sign was one that you complimented as being a good type of sign to have in it.
Well, it could fall under the heritage sign program. We'll talk about that. Sign height was another thing we looked at. The sign on the left is over the 20-foot maximum that we're recommending. The new McDonald's sign is the type of sign that we'd like to see more of, that's a type of a pylon or tall monument sign, let's say. And this is similar to the BMW sign down the road.
Let me stop you. Why does that sign need to be so tall? I'm just aesthetically, because I've seen, and I thought it was always peculiar that it had to be that tall to identify that it was a McDonald's behind it. I'm just posing the question, because you've had 10 meetings, somebody's addressed the same issue. Do you have an answer for that?
I don't, other than visibility, it's a fast-moving street. I suppose you could do a visual analysis of the speed and the distance of viewing it, but...
No, but my point is, if you have that big of a sign, you're getting rid of a pole sign, so you don't have a stick, but you end up with the same visual impairment. I mean, that seems to be a tall sign. It seems to be bigger than it needs to be.
Probably for visibility, it does not need to be that tall.
But what was the recommendation of all these committees that have met to date? That that was okay?
Yes, 20 feet. We brought it down from 25 to 20 feet. That was the recommendation of the committee.
Can you give me an assessment of the difference between 20 feet and 15 feet? I mean, would it not be as effective at 15 feet?
It probably, in my estimation, it probably would be.
I just think 20 feet's too high.
Mr. Mayor?
In your experience?
Yes.
On those, on the signs like McDonald's, those pylon or blade signs, I think they're kind of a carryover from the Mariners Mile design guidelines, and I think we've got three or four of them on Coast Highway now, and everybody can make their judgment as far as how effective or not effective they are. But that's kind of how they came about, is through those design guidelines.
Oh, no, but what we're talking about on a go-forward basis, is this what we want to be throughout our city, is 20-foot-high blade signs?
I think it's a valid question.
No, I mean, I'm just posing, I don't have an answer. Councilman Diggle?
How does our community treat flagpole heights? Only because you drive down the freeway, you get to San Clemente, and you see some really big flagpoles next to a fast food?
And I am speaking from memory, so please, but I think I was pretty close. In some zoning districts, the flagpole height is 35 feet, and in others, it's 50 feet.
Lit? And can be lit? Or should be lit?
They should be lit if an American flag is left up 24 hours a day.
No, but I guess the point is, in what Councilman Diggle's raised, if somebody wants to get visual attraction to their site, they buy some monster flag, stick it on a high pole, light it, and in essence, it's a form of signage. It attracts attention. And is that where your question's going?
That's pretty accurate.
Yeah, well, and one comment is, is that a flag is, that's not a governmental flag, is prohibited.
No, no, I'm talking about terrible Hearst gas will buy some 50-by-100-foot flag, stick it on a 50-foot pole to gain attention to the gas station. Under the notoriety, it's a flag, and he can do anything they want to do, but he gets the same amount of attention as he would have if he had a huge commercial sign.
Only if it's a governmental sign.
Good, okay. Is there an answer to that, Mr. Berger?
Oh, I'm sorry. This one, I'm not sure if it is, okay, it is on. We do have a roundabout way of getting to that, and as Ms. Walcott was pointing out, signs other than governmental flags, American flags, for example, are prohibited under the definition of animated signs. So you can't just stick up, you know, Joe's whatever, Joe's Garage flag and light that and get the added advertising benefit from that. But the mayor's point is valid, and I don't know that we can do a whole lot about that, at least in the sign code. I have definitely seen cases, and I think we probably all have, where someone would do just that. They would take up, they would put up a flagpole that's a maximum that they're allowed to have under the zoning ordinance, and put as big of an American flag up as they can possibly get, light that, and I'm not sure that we can do anything about that. I'm talking out of turn in terms of other parts of the municipal code, but at least not in the sign code.
Well, let's look at the same picture. We've got a McDonald's sitting right on the Coast Highway, that guy can put up a 50-foot pole, stick a huge flag on top of it, yet we constrain his height, constrain his HVAC units, all has to be screened, but he can have this huge flag that would be flying eye level to somebody on the slope. Is that permitted?
That would be permitted under the zoning code provisions for high limits for flag, high limits for flagpoles. So what George is saying is that if that's a concern that the council has, then we can address that through amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, all right. And what you're also saying is that this is not part of the context of this report. Now, in other words, the sign code does not deal with flags?
That's correct.
I mean, non-governmental flags. It deals with non-governmental flags.
It does deal with it in that it addresses it favorably. It does say that you are allowed to have governmental flags. American flags are something that we can't prohibit the installation of, so we purposely pull that out of the sign code in terms of prohibiting them or in any other way.
All right, what if some guy wants to hang a McDonald's sign? Is that regulated under the sign code?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Okay. One of the things that was brought up by the planning commission was the letter height. And we talked about that at some length, and came to the conclusion that a letter height of 36 inches should be the maximum size that an individual letter or logo can be. So the recommendation is 36-inch letter height.
And what's that, and what's this height here? What are we looking at?
I couldn't really tell. It's well above 36, standing under it and just, you know, looking up, I'd say it's close to 48, but I couldn't sort it out.
And if I might, one of the things that is good about the fact that we have this slide up is that, under the existing code, this is allowed. So that's one of the main reasons why the community said we have to do something about this code at this time, because the restaurant that was there before, Garlic Joe's, now, again, nothing to take away from the restaurant or the ability of the person to work within the regulations that are there now, but the former restaurant owner had a sign that was well beneath what he was allowed to have in terms of sign face area. When this new owner took over and decided they wanted a large sign, they worked with us, in actual fact, and said, what are we allowed to have? We don't really care about making it small, we want to make it as big as we can legally have. And this is what we were essentially, not forced to permit, but we couldn't use persuasion in this because they wanted to do what they wanted to do.
Well, isn't this why we're dealing with this issue? So this isn't repeated?
That's precisely right.
I mean, in a nutshell, isn't this right? Because there will be people that'll ask for the maximum.
That's correct, always will be.
Okay. Thanks.
Multi-frontage signs was a large issue that I recognized right away and that the committee also agreed with. By multi-frontages, we mean using literally every building facade that you have to put signs on. And you see this particularly along Old Newport Boulevard, where you've got frontage on Old Newport and Newport, and some in cases on the side of the building, in the case of the Pizza Building there, they have signs on three sides of the building. So the conclusion that we came to is that you should, you could be allowed to have signs on two sides of the buildings, but you have to declare a primary side. Whatever side you feel you have your best visibility, you can declare as a primary frontage, and your secondary frontage of your building gets half the sign allowance. So if you're allowed, say, 50 square feet for your primary, then you're allowed 25 square feet for your secondary. So if you're on a corner, you get two frontages. If you have a parking lot, similar to Baja Fresh there, we believe that, or the chicken takeout, those signs would be allowed, but would be much smaller, half of the primary side.
And if I could one more time interrupt. One of the things that's important in this discussion really is to understand that we want businesses to be able to have as much signage as possible to identify their business as effectively as possible. It's important for us as a governmental agency to understand the business mode and the business models to make things successful. Signage is a very important thing, and we can't forget that. And we want to, and we did with the outreach process particularly, try to work as closely as possible with as many types of businesses as possible to make sure that we didn't go overboard. There were some cases where we did go overboard a little bit, and we had to step the proposed regulations back after getting pushback, really, from some of the businesses. We want to make sure that that's apparent to you as the legislative body, that we are working hand-in-hand with the business community on this as much as possible.
Mr. Rosansky?
Just a quick question. Who designates the primary side and the non-primary side? Is it the property owner or the tenant?
Property owner, or, well, whoever's applying. If it's a tenant, you have to have written permission of the owner, so the owner would have to agree.
Okay. But could you have a situation where one tenant says this is the primary side, and the other tenant says the other side's the primary side?
Where you have two dominant frontages, yes, the way it's currently proposed, you could. For example, on Old Newport, with two frontages, if somebody felt that Newport Boulevard provided a better vantage point, then they would declare that as their primary.
Well, that's kind of where I was leaning, because it seems like then you might have a mishmash of, you know, big signs and little signs and big signs, and it seems like you'd want to have some kind of continuity as to which would be the primary side and the larger signs, and which is not the primary side, and so...
I think there's another provision that would prevent against that situation, at least when you have one building with several tenants that has two frontages, and that's the comprehensive sign code, sign program, which is required for how many businesses in one building?
Three or more.
Three or more is required to bring in a comprehensive sign program.
I see. So, and that would be done by the property owner?
Yes, they would. They would come up with the program for their building.
For their tenants.
For their tenants. And then, from then on, they would, each tenant would follow that.
And if there were any businesses that, this doesn't work. Pardon me. And if there were any businesses that the planning director determined that they were getting into a situation where they may have two businesses in the building, but the business owners and the property owners couldn't agree, or something like that, the planning director could make, could have the discretion to require a comprehensive sign program or something like that, so we can exercise some discretion ourselves on it.
Question, you mentioned, what happens if you have three sides? You have 100%, 50% on one side, what happens on the third side?
You can only have, you're only allowed to declare two sides.
When you've got Newport Boulevard, for instance, out here, would have, I don't know, it's Hotties or whatever it is, I think it has three sides. Down here, where Newport Boulevard splits apart, there's a couple of stores that have three faces with signs on. So you would say that you can only have two of the faces?
Two of the faces.
Even though both faces could be on an arterial highway?
Well, in the case of Old Newport, yes, you could declare both sides, but not a third side. That's the way it's currently proposed. You can, you can apply for a comprehensive sign program, again, for businesses that would require more than the allowance. And for example, many of the grocery stores today, for example, also have a bank in there. They might have a Florist, they might have a Starbucks, they might have multiple uses that need to be identified within a single building. It's a multi-tenant use, but it's not a multi-tenant building. So the comprehensive sign program looks at that special case, too. So if there were a special case, as you're pointing out, perhaps the sign program would work for that.
Can we go back to the slide at the top left? No, no, that slide. We have two signs, and we have a pole sign on top of it. Does this deal with the situation where you've got three signs? Isn't that, that's three signs on that Baja Fresh, right?
Right, you could not have that under the current proposal.
So in other words, that pole sign would go. You declare a primary and a secondary side, you get two sides, and you don't get a pole sign, too?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Multi-tenant signage is often a problem. Here, it wasn't really that big of a problem, because many of the signs that are out there that are multi-tenant are very well-designed, very tastefully done, and the only thing that we did and suggested here is that we have a minimum letter height of 12 inches. And if you look at the sign, the Century Village sign, much of the lettering there is not readable because it's simply too small, but if you look at the other signs, most of those signs are readable. Where it isn't, it's because the lettering is just too small. So we believe that a multi-tenant sign is okay, as long as you can read it at motor speeds. Now, I want to call your attention to the bottom two signs there, the, it's at the Albertson Center, I believe, with the liquor sign and the other signs there. Notice how the one on the left, at night, you only see the lettering that is lit. And we're going to talk a little bit more about how that opaque backness is really something that we want to, want to achieve. We have a slide talking about cabinet signs coming up.
I have one question on those signs. Some people are going to yell at me. Can we require them to put the street address numbers on that? Because that's one of the things that we don't seem to have in our signing codes along to the streets. It's, I know our code requires it, but nobody ever seems to put the addresses up. And I know personally, I'm driving around, and I, you can never find the address of a building, because it's not required for them to display it.
I think we all share your frustration, and it is in here, and it's probably in the existing, but I'm not sure of that. But it is definitely in the proposed.
Okay, so a sign like that could, down at the very bottom, have some 12-inch numbers that show the street address?
Right, and I believe there's a minimum size of number that you're to use also, so it's clearly visible in the code. Multiple signs is another issue. Thank goodness the bottom left there is not in Newport Beach, but that just shows you what the extreme can be if you don't limit the number of signs. So we're proposing that we actually allow one sign per street frontage. That's the current. Awnning signs present another, a new... Awning signs present another, a new, unique issue in themselves, too. Sometimes they're illuminated at night, and so, they become a, a much bigger sign at night. We think that awnings are good things, and that signs can be placed on awnings, and that's a good place. Sometimes it's the only place you can actually put a sign. So, we have new regulations limiting the amount of sign area that can be put on an awning, but, but they are allowed to be put there. But, they also count in the overall sign area. So, if you use your total sign area on your wall sign, and you have nothing left for your awning sign, well.
Let's take a look at the shamrock. If somebody, say that's under the new code, he's got, he's got the face of the building, he's got the face of the awning, and a side panel. Is that a primary, secondary side sign now? He'd only get two panels there, under the new regs? How would you deal with the shamrock? If it's a new?
Well, the shamrock, first of all, would have an overall allowed sign area, based on the frontage of the building. Let's say it's thirty feet, we're going at, let's say they're allowed thirty square feet. So, they could divide that thirty square feet, we call that the primary frontage, so they could have fifteen feet of sign area on the building, another fifteen feet on the canopy, and that would be their primary frontage for thirty feet.
Well, no, but my point is, you, my point is, you could have multiple signs on a primary side. You could have three signs, three such, separate shamrock identifications on the same primary side. Face of the building, the curve of the awning, and the, and the, and the horizontal, the vertical face, if you wanted to. You don't limit the number of times you can say the same thing.
Right, you'd also have a window sign. So, there's another opportunity. But, all within the maximum total sign area. So, we really kind of leave it up to the, to the business owner to decide where they can get the most bang for the buck. If it's on a larger sign on the building versus, say, a sign on the building, a sign on the awning, and a sign in the window, all of those are going to be much, much smaller, because you're still only allowed a maximum sign area for all of those.
I understand, but nine, nine meetings you've had, they've all addressed this issue, and they said that's okay. You know, you could, you could have shamrock identified ten times if, if the owner wanted to, and that was aesthetically pleasing, if it was in, within the total square footage allowed.
Well, I don't, you could have one building-mounted sign, you could have one awning sign, and one window sign.
Yeah, but you could identify the, the business numerous times, if you were within that, if you're allowed square footage and, and size. Right? I mean, there's no limitation of how many, how many time you identify the business, so long as you're within the square footage.
As long as you're within the square footage. And then, on the side, for example, the side panel, you'd get half, the total allowance.
Just a clarification for that. The, the, the sign code doesn't control content, so, it's the amount, it's the, the size and the location of the signs that the sign code focuses on, and not the content. So, you're correct, you, they could say whatever they want.
Good, that's fine.
The, the issue there was number, number of times said, wasn't content. What he's saying is, you can do, if you take your square footage, you can divide it up and put it three different places. It looks junky. I, I, that's, that's the point, and why wouldn't you limit it to two places? That, that's, that's the point.
I have a question.
Then it, then they would be limiting the number of signs per, they can have thirty square feet, but they can only break it up into two signs, or one sign.
Well, and that was my point. During all these meetings, no one brought that point up?
That question.
George? During the time, all, all these meetings, no one brought up the point of how many times you can put the same, or you can say the same message again and again?
No, not to that, not to that extent. If, if the question is really, can you say shamrock fif, or can you say shamrock three times, let's just pick on this one? Yes, you can, because then you get into the issue of content neutrality and that sort of stuff.
No, what the, what the mayor and council manager Ridgway is talking about is, did anybody talk about limiting the number of signs you could have?
That's what I'm getting to next.
Okay.
And, you're allowed to have, you're only allowed to have one sign per pri, one wall sign, let's say, per primary frontage. So, in this case, you're only allowed to have, or a business would only be allowed to have one building-type sign. Then, you are allowed to have one sign on your awning, and you are allowed to have one sign in your window. So, technically speaking, if somebody really wanted to push the envelope of taste, they can have up to three, per, on a primary frontage, and half that on a, on a secondary frontage. So, if they wanted to use those to say the same thing over and over, they could technically have up to three of those. Most people wouldn't do that, but, they could, and in this, in all the public hearing, or public meetings and outreach, nobody really brought up the issue of repetitive types of signs. That was one of the si, one of the slides that Ron actually showed, that, let's see. The, one on the upper left there with the, I can't even read, local color, I guess, that's the extreme example that could have possibly been permitted under the existing code that we have now. So, technically speaking, we're going, we're getting better, and nobody really brought up that, brought up that issue to the extreme that would address something like this.
So, in this case of local color, they could have one of those signs there, maybe one in their window. They don't have an awning, so they would be limited to two, and maybe slapping one on the other side as well.
That's correct, right.
Thank you.
In, in the shamrock, and I'm curious, could you go, go back to the shamrock? Your current reg, I mean, the new regulations would not allow them to have a sign across the entire front of the building?
That's correct.
So, they would have to only be fifty percent across the frontage, right?
That's right. And, and just to clarify also, they wouldn't be allowed to have the food-to-go and cocktails on the side of the awning? That falls under the designation of the secondary frontage, because it's in that vertical plane. So, as you can kind of see from the side of the building there on the slide, they've got a bunch of stuff on that side, too. So, that would be, that would end up having to be reduced.
Couldn't food-to-go and cocktails be, because their building goes back there, couldn't that, that be part of the, the square footage they allowed it for their secondary frontage?
Certainly. The other stuff would have to go. It's either one or the other, up to the size of the secondary.
So, they could still have a food-to-go?
Yes.
Also, since we have the shamrock there, and maybe you're going to cover it further on, are, have we addressed these mural signs? I know they seem around town.
Murals in the abstract, you mean, just?
Well, in this case, the mural is, says shamrock, and it has an Irish flag, I mean, it's clearly.
Certainly. That, that, in that case, is a sign. There's so much commercial message on that, that, that the planning commission determined, they, they made a distinction some months ago to, as to how to deal with the distinction between murals and painted signs, if you want to call them that.
So, in this case here, if they took the word shamrock away, it'd no longer be a sign? That would be a mural?
Most likely, yes. And the planning commission would, would get into that in terms of the subjectivity of it, but yes.
And, so, we're not regulating murals?
Well, we're just, we're describing them in the, in the sign code, but we're not regulating them if they don't have sign.
So, the potential is that you can still paint murals on your building if you want to? Thank you.
Changeable copy signs, the way the proposed ordinance is coming to you is that they're still allowed, however, they have to be an integral part of an existing sign, and, well, these signs would all be illegal anyway, because they're all pole signs, they are cabinet signs, they have translucent backings and so forth. But, if a new sign were to come in with a changeable copy sign, it would have to be designed as an integral part of the new sign, but they're still allowed. But, only the manually changed signs, not the electronically changed signs. Neon signs was another thing we looked at. Nobody had any particular concerns throughout the committee meetings and the workshops. The only thing that we, we did discuss and prohibit is the outlining of doors and windows and so forth, because that then just extends the sign area, and it's unnecessary. So, the upper-left-hand sign would not be allowed. The other typical signs are, are neon signs are allowed, as long as they fit within the, the confines and the area limitations of, of the sign program.
Would this also apply at Christmas time, when they put up Christmas decorations around their windows?
No, holiday decorations are excluded specifically. Temporary signs and banners, we looked at that extensively, and there's a, new regulations. Essentially, the essence is that the new regulations allow temporary banners and signs for events and so forth, limited to sixty days per calendar year. Non-conforming sign amortization. Now, anytime we change the regulations, things become non-conforming. You can choose to amortize those over time, or not to, just to let them go away through the course of development, and as, as signs change out. Through working with the committee and the planning commission, we have identified four types of signs that are being proposed for a fifteen-year amortization. That's the minimum that the state allows for an amortization period. So, they are roof signs, pole signs, as you see up in the upper-right-hand corner, it's not a great photo, but it's a, it is a pole sign. Cabinet signs with translucent backgrounds, and we'll get into that a little bit more, but, in the upper-right-hand corner, you can see that at night, the whole white part of that sign would light up, and that's something that we don't want to see anymore, so that's prohibited. And then, signs with lettering or logos over thirty-six inches in height. So, those four sign types are being proposed to be amortized over a fifteen-year period, so they literally come down within that fifteen-year period. Now, along with that, staff, I don't know if they're prepared to talk about the incentive program, but we've talked about coming up with some kind of program to incentivize the, the removal of those non-conforming signs at a, at an earlier stage, and we may talk about that later.
Okay, in your fifteen-year period, that means the structure of the sign can be there for fifteen years. But, if you change ownership and the messages on the sign, that's still allowed over, until the fifteen years are up?
Yeah, you, well, you would change the message, the new owner would change the message. They can, yes, they can change the message.
Okay, so, why can't we, when the businesses change ownership, make them conform when they're, when they have their new establishments opened?
State law.
But, I believe in, in the case of the translucent background cabinet signs, that if someone were to change the face within the fifteen-year period, then the new face would have to have the opaque background.
Right, that's correct.
On the amortization, at the planning commission, we talked about adding in the category over seventy-five square feet. And, I think that was going to be included in the June ninth meeting, then in the final draft that came out, it wasn't included?
It was not.
What was the reason for that?
That, that was one of the things where, over seventy-five square feet signs, there are just so many of them around the city, in the districts where the sign code would apply, that we discussed that at some length during the last planning commission meeting, and, and that just wasn't in the final, it didn't make the final cut, if you will.
Oh, just one, one other further clarification. Unlike those box signs, if, even assuming they change the plastic panel, or whatever material it's made out of, the lettering and things like that would still have to comply?
Yes, sir.
With the new ordinance?
It would, that's right.
So, it's just the physical structure that wouldn't have to be removed? But, whatever they put in it, would still have to be compliant?
That's correct. So, the only, the only one of these signs that wouldn't have to sort of pseudo-comply, the box has, would have to be allowed to stay for fifteen years. But, the only one is the one on the bottom right there, the Garlic Joe's, because those letters are something you can't change technically, without taking them off and, and bringing them into conformity, so that one would be.
Right, they'd have to come into conformity.
That's right.
Unless the guy just wanted to call his restaurant Joe's or something, and just leave the sign forever.
Let me go back a couple of slides, and, and that is to the text signs. Guys that, you know, have that lettering, like Duffy on his boats. You know, he has those cute names of the boats, he keeps changing that. How did the committee deal with that, which seems a little, I shouldn't use, I won't use a term. It seems odd that a city that's, we, we restrict the McDonald's, and we restrict all the signage to have, somebody can lay some misspelling and periodically change it, and it looks, it looks, it can be in rather poor taste, and we have no, we have no control of that content. You know, which when they continue to replace the letters and put on little names and things. I want to, I want to ask, how did the committee address those?
It didn't seem to be an issue. We showed these signs many times, we did a visual preference, kind of a survey, if you will, with the committee. Many people, I think, disagreed that it was not, just, it wasn't a bad idea, because things change, they need to, they need to advertise, it just didn't come as a.
Well, I mean, if you look at that car wash sign with that, I mean, that goes back fifty years, it seems like. We grew up with those signs. You do this all over. What, what do other cities do? Do you ever bring?
Many of them prohibit them.
All right, well, that's, that's, that's fair.
Aren't there some design guidelines that is dealing with those?
Uh, no, there are, well, there are design guidelines that talk about the quality of signs, the quality of materials, which, which could affect that, yes. But, as, in terms of the actual physical changing of a, of a sign, through changeable copy, they don't deal with that specifically. The only thing that we did add to the current proposal is that it must be more integrated into, into a sign, into the overall sign.
And, one other thing I might add, too, that the only time, the only way you can get one of these type of changeable copy signs is through the granting of a comprehensive sign program. So, it has to be part and parcel of another larger, more rigorous sign application. You can't just stick up a, a, a changeable copy sign on the side of your building and say, "Well, that's what I want to have." So, you have, the planning commission would get a chance to review that, so.
Well, no, but the, and, and those movable text, or changeable text signs are not part of this amortization plan or anything else. Those are going to stay up until something happens.
That's correct.
Good.
What about if they're on a pole sign?
Well, if they're on a pole sign, they would have to come down as part of the amortization.
Right, like that Hooters sign's going to come down, right?
Right, all of those would have to come down if the amortization.
And even Duffy's sign, probably has a good chance of.
I think so.
Coming down. I, personally, I like it, too, but I'm just saying that that, eventually, that, that thing will go.
But, that might end with a heritage exemption.
Heritage, I don't know that that's a heritage sign.
But, if they wanted to get a, if they wanted to bring, let's take that business, for example, if they wanted to come in and, and organize their sign program under a comprehensive sign program, technically speaking, that sign could be granted, and granted some sort of stipulation that it could stay up somehow or other. Probably not the pole sign, we wouldn't most likely be able to, to go that far, but, if they wanted to put it on something else, or put it into a pylon sign, or something like that, we could address it that way.
Okay. Let me, let me ask a question. We're at five-thirty, we've got the Rhine Canal. I'm going to ask you how long you have to go?
I think this is the last, pretty much the last slide, we're, yeah, we're done.
Yeah, but then, but then there's going to be some discussion among us. And so, Homer, what's your call here?
I think if the council really wants to finish up with this and get all of your comments, we should take this. Is there any problem with carrying the Wine Worf channel over to the next study, sir?
And is it, in fact, a half hour?
Yes. It's about a twenty-minute stamp presentation, so we're probably, you know.
And there's a big number in it, isn't there? Well, no, I'm only trying to say, if there's a big number, those big numbers are best suggested early, rather than late. Homer, what's your call?
I think we ought to continue with where we are, so that this.
Okay, that's fine.
We can move past this.
Thanks.
Okay, we talked briefly about the heritage sign program. One of the things that when we make signs non-conforming, and we put them into an amortization program, we don't always want to amortize and get rid of every single sign out there. Some signs are significant to the community. They have cultural significance, they have historic significance, whatever. So, if you qualify, if you apply and qualify as a heritage sign, you can get special disposition to not have to remove your non-conforming sign. It would become a heritage sign, or historical sign, whatever we end up calling it.
In the example of the Crab Shack, their, not Crab Shack, Crab Cooker, getting my crabs mixed up. In this particular building, they have their, the Crab Cooker across the entire frontage, and so, our sign code would want to, let's put it this way. If his building sign is not a heritage sign, and only the "Don't look up here" sign's a heritage sign, then we would force him to reduce his message across the front, right?
That's a perfect example, and I'm glad you brought it up, and with, using this example, because, yes. The, as we've looked at it and worked with the owner on it, the, the herit, the, the sign that is, that is significant to the, to the community is the "Don't look up here" sign. Up Here" sign. It's not the, the Crab Cooker signs that basically are just outlined in neon along the entire width of both sides of the building. Those are popular, they're not historic, they're not significant necessarily, they are in the eyes of the business owner, to be sure, but that's really an issue that the planning commission has asked to take on as, as sort of the arbiter of that. We've proposed a list of signs, you've got that in front of you in your packet, but at the same time, there's, there's a big difference between what the community thinks is significant and what the community might think is popular. And that's why we tried to deal with it from the standpoint of both age and beauty, and, make it a little bit more of a strict interpretation of something, so that we could deal with the heritage of the city of Newport Beach, not just either, one, it's old, or two, it's just popular. And that's, again, where we, we're proposing an initial list, and we're going to ask the planning commission to get into the fray of making the initial determinations, but also, as things come up, as an applicant brings something forward to this, to the city, the planning commission has the dubious honor of, of taking a staff recommendation and saying, "Yes, we think that that is significant to the culture of the city," or "No, it's not."
Okay, focusing to the attorney, I have a sense that this is highly regulated by law. Is that right, City Attorney?
The amortization?
Not the amortization, this whole sign code, what can go on it, the content, or, or can we write our own codes? It's unusual for us to have outside folks helping us and have attorney as part of that. Why is that? Is this a highly legally regulated area, or what's the purpose?
It's the constitutional implications for First Amendment, we just have to be careful in looking at it from, the regulations from a constitutional point of view.
Meaning, just give us in one paragraph what that means, content?
The content.
I mean, it has to have some relevance to the business that's being conducted in the building?
Well, there's, there's different content issues, for instance, procedures and processing, approvals, prior restraints is one section of the constitutional issues. Content, commercial versus non-commercial content is another issue. Off-site commercial advertising versus onsite commercial advertising is another area where the courts have gotten involved in constitutional issues. So I had Kathy Walcott work with staff throughout the whole process, and we did the best we could, and I think we have probably about as constitutional proposed regulations as we can get.
So that's the answer. The fact is that this is not just design issues, it's legal issues, the legal issues had to be woven into the proposed changes.
Well, it's more making sure that it is just design issues, and trying to get away from having the ordinance be challenged because it does.
No, that's my point, I mean, the fact is, if somebody doesn't like it, they're going to sue us, and we're trying to make it stick as best we can.
Yes.
It's probably not the legal term, but I am a lawyer, too, I probably dropped that one. Okay, where do we go next, George?
Just to remind you that part of this overall package is a set of design guidelines, which you have before you, that mainly deal with the quality of signs. It talks about proper use of color, proper use of materials, letter spacing, all of the things that go together to make a good-looking sign. It's, it's just that, they're guidelines, they help people achieve what the city has determined to be good design, and frankly, they're just good ideas that could be applied in any community, and that's part of the package also.
Just a quick question, do the sign criteria apply to PC text, Fashion Island?
They don't, they do not apply in.
Or if we did approve a shopping center and it had a PC overlay, then they would have their own separate sign criteria, probably a comprehensive, okay.
That's correct, that's correct. This is simply an outline, I don't need to go through that. The sign code was extensively reorganized, rewritten to make better sense of it, extensively rewritten to cover all of the legal aspects that we could possibly think of, because there are people out there who will just find something as unconstitutional, the courts will invalidate the entire ordinance, and then they'll slip in whatever they want, mostly billboards, and that, that goes on throughout the country. So we think this is as bulletproof as we can probably get at this time.
And what does this jewel look like? I mean, is it ten pages, a phone book?
No, that's it with the.
No, no, I understand, but I, but that's, that's the other side of it. I mean, it is not this, it is, that's, it's what's in your binder, right?
Right, and this is, and this is single-sided, so it's, it's half that.
No, I didn't want it to be manageable so it's usable, that's the whole, that's the whole concept.
Right.
Okay, guess we can have the lights, great, all right. Homer, what's our next step?
I think this is going to City Council very soon, at the next meeting.
Yeah, public hearing on it will be at the August twenty-third meeting.
So instead of asking all of these detailed questions, we wanted to, you know, use the study session, so that when we put it on the next regular agenda, hopefully we would have gotten through some of these issues, and discussion won't last, you know, two hours.
When's it coming back?
It's coming back next regular meeting.
Okay, do you need more direction from us?
No.
I'm just, I'm not limiting the rest of the council, the rest of the council wants to weigh in.
Any direction you want to give us, if you want to locate.
Mr. Selich wants to give you some right now.
I got a few. The.
He's getting a second bite at this thing.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm getting a chance to get all the stuff I didn't get in at the planning commission. I think that one of the most offensive things about the existing, the sign code is, is the number of signs, there are these large signs that are up to the maximum of two hundred square feet, and it seems to me that in the amortization program that we should have the signs that are over seventy-five square feet. I know George said there's a lot of them, but I don't know what a lot means. I, I, I know there's a substantial number of them, but I don't know that it's unmanageable to go out and identify them. I agree with the staff when they said that if we tried to make, put all the non-conforming signs on the amortization program, it would be a big burden on the staff and be quite costly, but I'm not really convinced that if we put the signs over seventy-five square feet on that list, that that would be the case. The other, my, my other comments really revolve around the, around non-conforming signs and abandoned signs. And, so let me go through here. The, I guess one of the concerns that I had that I brought up at the planning commission, and it's under the section that deals with the continuance of non-conforming signs, and it says here, under the section on repairing and repainting signs, that "Non-conforming signs shall only be painted and repaired in place and shall not be removed from their existing location, except for building remodeling." And it seems to me that if we're going to, if someone's going through the extent of doing a substantial remodeling on a building, and they're going to remove the sign from the building, then when the new sign goes up, it ought to be a sign that conforms to the code.
What about the issue at Bayside and PCH where the entire project was rebuilt, but the pole sign was maintained, unless it's a pylon sign? That's a subtlety to what you just said.
And it is, and that gets to another point that I'm going to make later.
If I might add.
On the sign structures, which is different than the, different than the signs.
And if I could add at that point, or at this point, I don't believe that, that Councilman Selich was at the la, well, I know that he wasn't at the last meeting, we added something to address that.
Okay.
And if you go up to item number three under B, removal of non-conforming signs, we did have a significant amount of discussion about that, and we, and the planning commission recommended that if the remodeling or exten, enlargement or expansion was on a portion of the building that was more than fifty percent of that, of the building, then essentially you could call it an non-conforming sign and have it removed.
Okay, well, that was another one of my questions, because I didn't understand what that section meant, so, thank you. Then on the deactivation of flashing signs, when does that have to occur?
That's a good question, I'm going to.
Flashing signs, and because of the question, they allow you to, or able to deactivate flashing signs immediately after they're placed, and maybe.
Ms. Walcott just pointed out that, that under the business, the State Business and Professions Code, once the sign code is adopted and goes into effect, the deactivation is, is going to be, essentially, it would be right away.
Doesn't have to be amortized.
I mean, like Joe's, the Crab Shack, that, if it's flashing, you can't fly, we could do away with those.
Okay, then, going to abandoned signs, how are we going to be treating, and two come to my mind right away, one is Margaritaville, and the other is Windows on the Bay. We've got two, two abandoned signs that, under this, under this code, the way I read it, that those signs have to be removed, but the structure itself, which gets to your, your point on the structure, the sign structure doesn't have to be removed, yet we have one that has some copy-up on it, and the other one has kind of a canvas material covering it, which has been covering it for the last five years, but yet the sign after ninety days is considered abandoned, but we seem to have a conflict here between the sign copy and the sign structure itself, and how, you know, how are we rectifying that, and how are we treating that in this? I'm still not quite sure.
I'm going to throw that one to the City Attorney's Office, because I, that's one of the issues that's a little bit complex for, for me to, to really explain as well.
The, the, it's the structure itself that is the, the physical structure itself that is the part that you have to amortize, because we don't control the copy, so I'm not, which, which sign on Margaritaville are you saying, how are we going to?
There's, there's, there's a pole sign, the operation's been shut down for, I don't know, five or six months, and there's a pole sign out in front right now.
Yeah, so that would, that pole sign would have to be amortized, because it's not part of the use, and I don't know that you can necessarily say that it's been abandoned.
Well, by the definition of the code, if the business hasn't been in use for ninety days, it's considered abandoned, if you read section B here.
Okay, well, then I'm going to ask Kathy.
Well, I guess the same thing, right across the street at Windows on the Bay, which that restaurant has not been in service for several years.
Right.
And that's the one covered with canvas. Why, there's not even any sign on the canvas saying "for sale" or "for rent." Why can't we ask that that be removed?
I don't think we have addressed that yet.
I think that's something that we will have to address for the council at the, when we come to that next meeting, and we will resolve that, one way or the other, on what we can do, as far as we can. The problem is, is the Business and Professions Code provisions don't talk about the abandonment process. They just talk about the right to the sign, and the protection for the sign, and the requirement for the fifteen-year amortization.
Yeah, well, I would like to see if there's some way that we can have the structure removed as well as the sign. I mean, I know we're under a lot of constraints through state law.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It just doesn't seem, you know, going through all the sign code, then you have a sign sitting there for five or six years, however it's been long since Windows been abandoned, just covered up with a piece of cloth.
The, the, there's a conflict between our normal concept of abandonment, like abandonment of a use, and the, and the requirement for a use permit, and the State Business Professions Code provisions on the protection for a sign, and since we hadn't started any kind of amortization period, whether they have a property right in having those signs there, until we adopt some sort of amortization, something we have to spend a little bit more time on, it sounds like.
Okay, then, finally, I know that beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so maybe heritage is, too, but I'm just wondering if we're maybe not a little too stringent on our definition of heritage signs, like the thirty-five years, and, you know, you were pointing out the Crab Cooker example, I, you know, I, if someone were to ask me, I'd be tempted to say the whole, the whole building, all the sods and everything there is a heritage sign, not just the "Don't Look Up Here."
Thank you.
That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
That, that is certainly within the purview of the, of the City Council to make changes on that. That's one of those issues where it was a little gray, we tried to come up with something that would work. It was a continuation of what was in the Balboa sign overlay that was approved by council back in two thousand. So if you'd like to, to have us make changes to that part of it, we'd be, it'd certainly be welcome, I'm sure that there would be a number of sign owners that would be, would be grateful for that. One of the issues that we didn't want to have happen, though, is to have a, a proliferation of signs that were being allowed as heritage signs, that were really sort of borderline, that would eventually, or that would just be able to be, to, to stay out forever, until they fell down. So it's sort of a balancing act that you have to do on any type of a program like this. So we'd be interested in, in hearing more, more about that, and more suggestions, certainly.
Well, if you change the Crab Cooker sign, you're going to have a whole lot of postcards that just aren't going to look quite right.
Bob could do a new painting.
It, it would be helpful to have, you know, and I'm not that familiar with this part of the pro, this particular section, but it's, it's helpful to have objective standards by which you determine whether it's a heritage sign or not, because if it's an amortized sign, and you start getting it in this gray area where you have this objective standard to say, "This pole sign gets to stay up and this one has to go away," it, it does create, create problems for our sign code. So that's why we have to kind of take a look, and if the council are, and we can relook at the objective standards that we would have for determining whether it's a heritage sign or not.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, has somebody taken notes on your side, you know, we're heading? And what, go ahead.
I just have a question for Mr. Selich, since he was there. Ed, how do you feel about pylon signs being fifteen feet as opposed to twenty?
I'd have no problem with that.
Okay, I, I just think in the future, I mean, I, I don't know where we're going as a council, but anyhow, you might put that in the back of your mind.
You know, I will say this, I think one of the things that we ought to look at, the mayor brought it up, is, is the McDonald's sign. Those, those blade signs are, is that what they're called, blade signs?
Yes, sir.
Started with the Mariners Mile Design Guidelines, and it was, thought that the BMW dealership sign looked, looked really nice, and it does, and so it was put in as a preferred design type on Mariners Mile, and now with, and we had the Sea Scout base came, come in, and they did a nice job on theirs, but I tend to agree with the mayor that although that, that that sign is allowed under the design guidelines that were in place when it, when it's approved, that that's an example of one that probably shouldn't have been assigned of that type. I'm not sure how we address the issue, but you have good ones and bad ones, and that doesn't seem to be a particularly good use of a blade sign to me.
Yeah, there, there's always going to be that subjectivity in terms of the design that they come up with, and I know that the zoning administrator worked extensively with the McDonald's folks on trying to get that, that particular sign, and the signage on the building generally, worked out so they could have something that McDonald's could live with as a corporation, but would also fit in with the standards of Mariners Mile and the city in general. Obviously, that's what they came up with as the best compromise they could get under the current regulations, but within the, the, the new regulations that are proposed, there can be a lot more changes. Plus, the design guidelines that are going to be going into effect citywide, we hope, we'll have a little bit more to say about quality, as, as Mr. Fugroth pointed out. So we'll be able to use a little bit more persuasion effort now, if we get design guidelines in place.
No, but, but I think what Ms. Selich is saying, if the new specs are going to be at fifteen feet, there wouldn't be any discussion with McDonald's, you had to be fifteen feet or shorter, it wouldn't start at twenty.
That's exactly right.
Right, that's good. Okay, any other comment from council, comment from staff? Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment, which I didn't do on the last item, I apologize for.
Mayor Heffernan, members of the council, thank you for giving me a minute to just address a couple of thoughts relative to the comment this afternoon. I did spend quite a bit of time on this, and one of the first things that I would remind you is that, when I came to this business about serving on this particular committee, I came with an open mind. Here was government coming to tell business how to operate its business, and so we're always a little bit leery about that, if you know what I mean. And so I, but I said, "No, that's, don't do that, you got to come with an open mind, and what we want to do here is to be open to suggestions, and let's try to do this for the betterment of the community." So keep in mind that, on behalf of your interest in this issue, it's one of aesthetics for the community. On behalf of the small business owners that are out here trying to make a buck, it's an economic issue. So it's aesthetics versus economics, and I would ask you to consider that when you're making these, you know, changes, et cetera. Secondly, one of the things that came up somewhat frequently was the business about the distinct and unique villages that we have in our community, and how those distinct and unique villages have a, kind of a different flair for them. So for example, the airport is different to Coronado Mar, different to Balboa Island, et cetera, and they have all sorts of different sign requirements. And so one of the things that our consultant heard more than once was, "We don't want to be Irvine, we're not trying to sanitize the community here." So character in signs is a good thing. Now, that doesn't mean that they have to be as big and blatant as, as they could possibly can, but character is not a bad thing. Third is that, when all is said and done, what I was looking for, and what I think the commu, the committee that we addressed this particular issue was, was kind of insisted on, and that was some wiggle room at the end. So when all is said and done, yeah, these are the, these are the, the cases where we have, but we want to be able to appeal it in a, kind of a specific case scenario, where this business about a comprehensive sign ordinance, or maybe a heritage sign, or some of these other opportunities were in there, and that was important to us. And then. And then, let's see here, finally, this business about the monument sign, and I don't remember where we started, what the existing code allows in terms of the height of monument signs, but as I recall, I think we were already at something like 30 or 35 feet, we came down to 25 feet, at the planning commission, we came down to 20, and now you're suggesting 15. Remember that, although you might like, not like the, the particular McDonald's sign that you're referring to here, there are other areas in the community where, maybe on Jamboree, or maybe out in the airport area, where we're trying to do some redevelopment and some, some economic vitality, we may want to have an opportunity to do a little higher sign. So, I caution you to, to not get carried away with just one offensive McDonald's sign on Coast Highway, that's a particularly not necessarily a good example. That's all I had to say.
Then, Mr. Swirz, I have a suggestion, is that when this thing comes up for a hearing, then we'd like to see those other signs, that maybe are more pleasing than McDonald's sign, to say this is a 20, and a 25, and an 18, you know what I'm saying, to give us, 'cause we were just going for what we saw.
Absolutely.
That might be a suggestion.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for Swirz? No? Okay. Public comments still open on this item? Anybody else? Okay, we'll close that. Any concluding comments?
I'd like to ask just one.
Yes, Mr. Nichols?
How does, how's, this is all for commercial signs, right? I mean, or what about a signs in a person's yard, or real estate signs, or these kinds of things?
They're also addressed in the code.
So, this is all going to be carried in the code, too?
Yes, it always has been, and I think in those areas, we didn't make any changes from what we had had before. What we outlined for you today were the areas where there are significant changes from the existing code.
There are no changes in the.
Okay. Minor changes.
I have one question, when we got to talking about the McDonald's sign, I'm a little confused. If the McDonald's sign were sitting on a single pole, at the height that it is, it wouldn't have the big white blade that goes all the way to the ground, that doesn't seem to make any sense or have any use. So, I'm concerned why the blade-type sign is better than a pole-type sign, 'cause a pole takes up less space, and it's, it's not as offensive.
If I might, that's one of those issues that came directly out of the Mariners Mile sign code, and you're exactly right, that if you just have a pole sign, it's clearly gonna be, gonna have less visibility to, at least the bottom part, than the pylon itself would. I think that what was happening when the Mariners Mile Design Guidelines were going in, they were trying to figure out a way to get rid of, one, the lollipops, because most people don't like those just inherently, that was one of the visual preference survey issues that always kind of comes up, people don't really like those signs. But they're also trying to deal with, how can we get something that is substantial as a sign, and try to make them relatively, at least for Mariners Mile, anyway, try to make them more like, a bad example maybe, but more like trees, where you see them, you kind of see them in a line as people build them, and you see the logo, but there's some regularity, like the, the palm trees, or something like that, to some small extent, that's a design thing. Other people may not agree with that, may not think it's as pleasing to the eye. When we tried to address it, and the committee tried to address it with this go-around, we recognized that that was an important part of the, of the thinking that they did in terms of the overall urban design fabric for the city, and lower the height of them as much as we could, and obviously, there's been some discussion about that, but also try to deal with them in terms of allowing for a monument sign less than eight feet tall, so really, you'd have, or the business or property owner would have a choice of even bringing it down further, and having some of the same type of texture.
Good, any other comments? Okay, I think we'll conclude this item. And Mr. Luedau, we gonna come back to the Rhine Canal at a subsequent meeting, right?
We will.
Along with the warning issue that we passed over already with Chief Riley?
That's coming right to you.
Good, we'll follow up on that. Okay. City Clerk?
We're in public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes.
Anybody wanna speak on anything? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that item. Okay, City Clerk? Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session. Anything else I have to say, City Attorney? No, regular sessions at 7 o'clock. Thanks.